County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Are you none? Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Ms. Serza, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Item 3.2, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is that a second, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Are you none, Ms. Serza?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 4.1, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My report this evening begins with a welcome back to some of our English learner students. Last week, 53 English learner students returned to classrooms for in-person learning. As you know, these are some of our most vulnerable learners who may experience challenges in a remote setting. Our teachers and administrators are excited to have these young people back in the building, along with the students with disabilities in select classes who returned to school in mid-September. Speaking of excitement, I have some wonderful Teacher of the Year news to share with you this evening. Alyssa Smith, the 2020 Jamestown High School and WJCC Schools Division Teacher of the Year, has been named the top teacher in our region by the Virginia Department of Education. That makes her one of eight finalists for the Virginia Teacher of the Year honors. Ms. Smith has had 20 years of teaching experience, has served as the World Language Teacher at Jamestown High for five years. In addition to her teaching responsibility, she served as a mentor teacher for two years until she became the lead mentor and presenter for new teachers at Jamestown High School. Alyssa is also a leader in the school's one-to-one pilot program, which assists teachers in integrating technology and selecting appropriate instructional tools and assessments. Last week, Ms. Smith participated in interviews with the State Teacher of the Year Selection Committee. They will announce the winner this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. during a virtual ceremony. WJCC Schools will carry the event live on our Facebook page. Be sure to join us and cheer on Ms. Smith. We are fortunate to have outstanding teachers such as Ms. Smith in our school division. We are so very proud of her and wish her all the best this Thursday. Madam Chair, that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there board members who would like to make announcements? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to share that on September 17th, the Special Education Advisory Committee had its first meeting of the school year via Zoom, and so they're just getting their work underway. And I will report after they meet again next week. So I also wanted to share that you'll announce at the end of this meeting that we have a special joint meeting coming up later this month, and I had the pleasure of meeting with Councilwoman Ramsey and Supervisor Larson and City Manager Trivet to discuss the logistics of that meeting. Dr. Jim Regenbaugh will be the guest speaker, and we talked about what trends and benchmarks around state level and local level funding we'd like to see him focus on. So we look forward to that. So I just wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Were there additional announcements from board members? Okay, moving on to citizens' comments. I understand we have one. Citizen?
This is Suzan Hildum, representing the York James City Williamsburg NAACP Education Committee. All of our schools have at least 10% black students, and yet in the past school year, two of our schools had no black teachers at all. This is not the example we want to set for any of our students, regardless of ethnicity. All students need to know that teachers of color are respected professionals who are qualified to teach them. Regarding this need to hire more teachers of color, we request that you make an effort to appoint principals who show a commitment to hiring teachers of color. In addition, we believe that making decisions earlier in the season on hiring teachers will give you a look.
I understand that concludes that comment. Moving on to our proposed agenda items, 6.1, Advisory Committee Appointments. Members received and reviewed applications tonight, and we will appoint members to our board committees, Student Advisory, CTE, and Special Education Advisory Committee on the 20th of October. Are there comments or questions or discussion with regard to that? Are you none? We'll move on to item 6.2, Annual Review and Approval of School Board's Standard Operating Procedures. I will toss that to Dr. Beers and Ms. Hummel.
Want to take it?
Yeah, after looking over the SOP, we came to the conclusion that we did not see any need for making any changes in our SOP this year.
But we welcome any of our fellow school board members who may want to make any changes to take this opportunity to let us know, and if so, we'll, you know, circle it around everyone and let everyone know. And then I guess on the 20th, we can vote to change it or keep it the same.
Ms. Cook?
So just for point of clarity, because normally we do this in January, right? So did we do this in January this year? Or is this instead of January next year? I don't remember. It seems like everything's been a flurry. Does anyone remember?
I know my first year on the board, we did do it in January. So it was brought up to Policy Committee.
I'm going to defer to Janet. Ms. Serza, do you know, did we do it this year?
Yeah.
Was it just the one year? Okay, thank you. So this is the annual, okay. The normal timeframe, I guess. It was just... Approved last year. Okay, thank you. The only thing I saw that was kind of interesting, and I don't know how many times I've read this document, and every now and then something pops up that I wonder about. But on page 15, it seems that, and I'm fine with this, but I just thought I would point it out, seems like there's two pathways, if you will, to call a special meeting. So it seems that in the, sort of at the top of page 15, let's see, I guess it's the third paragraph, "Special meetings are held as needed. The chair or any two members may call a special meeting." But then if you scroll down, it talks about how a special meeting can be called with unanimous, I mean, on page 16. Yeah, sorry, page 16. I'm sorry, it may be called at a regular board meeting by any member if approved by majority vote. So just in one way, it's majority vote, and the other way, it's two. And so we could view that as inconsistent with each other or just two different pathways. I just thought I'd throw it out.
Are there thoughts on that?
Are there any, I think in the code that requires a special? If there isn't anything defined in code, it should be one or the other, I would think.
Just to be consistent. Is there a preference?
Page 16.
Yeah, I think majority is probably, like the chair or a majority of them, probably better governance.
Are folks okay with that change?
I'm fine with that change.
Okay.
If like Mr. Kelly suggests that there's no other kind of regulations in state code just otherwise.
Just to be clear, you would take the third paragraph on page 15, strike it, is that correct?
Articulation?
Because, huh? Because that, the whole session that says special meetings below, is that what you're recommending? I guess I didn't, I just wanted to point it out. It struck me this time. Or it's been here the whole time. That issue.
I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, but I think I would strike it, I guess. So I'm just making sure Janet is getting all this down.
But then add the chair.
And then whatever anybody else wants has to say, like Jim, Beers?
Yeah, I'm not sure about striking that little paragraph, because the meeting, obviously meetings can be called outside of a regular meeting. That other paragraph says, "Special meetings may be called at a regular board meeting. You can call a special meeting anytime." Do you understand?
Right, that's not during a board meeting.
I don't know, maybe...
That's a nuance.
Those need to be, I hadn't really thought about it, but maybe they should be combined or language used that said, "In addition," or, because there are obviously two different times when you can call a special meeting.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's a good point. And maybe we just need to move that section on page 15 to page 16, because it has the heading of special meetings, and then go back to what Ms. Cook said, that there are two paths.
Yeah, Julie.
Yeah.
Maybe we should, yeah, so we can tinker with that.
Tinker with it.
Okay.
And then float it around?
Okay.
Does that sound good?
And then...
Can I clarify?
You guys can wordsmith as appropriate?
And in response to Mr. Kelly's question, the only thing it says in the code is that the board sets its own process for calling a special meeting.
I do agree that there are times when you could call a special meeting during a school board or outside of the school board. So if we struck that, that would...
A problem.
... negate that.
Right, you could only call a special meeting during a school board meeting.
That's not what we want. Okay.
Yeah, because there are obviously times when appropriate.
Yep.
Ms. Dowell?
And I like the idea of either by majority of the board, which happens in a meeting, or by the chair, but if the chair is talking to each member and realizes there's a majority of the board that wants a special meeting, then the chair calls it, right? So it's just two members, like I can't even imagine how those two members would even call the special meetings next to that. Well, if you have, in the event you have a chair that is like a controller or whatever, then you'd want to have the ability to have two members.
The majority of the board would be able to call that, not...
Right, exactly.
Okay, just to muddy this up, just a tad more, a chair and a member are two members.
Right.
Right.
Correct. Chair and two members?
No.
No.
Why isn't the chair also a member?
Yeah. It is a member.
It'd be a chair and one member.
But I don't think that's what it's referring to. I think it's two people that are not chairs.
Or other, two members other than the chair. Want to do it that way?
Ms. Dowell?
So yeah, you got to what my question was, because if we're bringing that third paragraph down to under special meetings heading, yes, the chair is also a member. The chair does not need to be that first or second member. They can be a sole, right, person calling the special meeting. And then is it the chair, and then special meetings may also be called at a regular meeting. So yeah, just some clarification on what you'd like to see there.
I just wanted to get away from the two members and make it more a majority of the board.
Correct.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I... Did this thing for two...
So if folks have additional language or thoughts with regard to that, they can get it to Ms. Hummel or Dr. Beers. And then if there are any other things you'd like them to consider or address between now and the 20th, so the goal will be you'll work on that. And do you have a timeline for when you want feedback back to you by?
Ms. Cook, do you volunteer to take the first pass? Brought it up. No, I don't.
I love that.
That was good.
Yeah, no, I mean, again, I just, I was literally reading it. My prep time today was compressed, and so I just was reading it today, and it struck me, so. So you're bringing it up, but you would like either Jim or me to take a first pass at it? Or just, yeah, make a recommendation. Again, I clearly have been fine with this for five years, so.
I'm sure the two of you can handle it.
Yeah.
Okay, so move...
Catch it the first time.
That's right. All right, so moving on.
Well, does anyone else have any, anything that they haven't noticed in five years? No, right?
Julie and Jim, you'll send that out to us in the next week or so to let us look at that. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to item 6.2, or no, 6.3, Dominion Energy Electric School Bus Initiative and Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last year, the school division applied for one of the grants to be part of the Dominion Energy Electric School Bus Initiative and Purchase, and we were unsuccessful last year, but we have the opportunity this year to purchase four electric buses through this initiative. And Mr. Snipes is here to present the information this evening. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. I am really very excited to provide the information tonight about Dominion Energy's choice to partner with us for Electric School Bus Initiative. As Dr. Heron said earlier this year, we applied, and when Dominion Virginia announced plans for the nation's largest electric school bus initiative to provide cost savings to school districts. And of those school districts, WJCC will receive four electric school buses. The electric school buses are 60% less expensive to maintain and operate over their lifetime, will provide a wide range of benefits, including environmental benefits, and will provide vehicle-to-grid technology whenever the buses are not in use. As part of the initiative, Dominion Energy will pay the difference in costs between a traditional diesel bus and an electric bus, and will offset the additional costs of the, including the infrastructure. We anticipate receiving the buses by the end of this year if approved, and the infrastructure will also be in by that time. As a part of the FY '19 Year End Spending Plan, $440,000 was approved for bus replacements. Funds will be transferred, any additional funds needed will be transferred from the transportation fuel account in the amount of $44,000. Superintendent recommends the school board review the information and be prepared to vote on the initiative and purchase at your October 2020 meeting.
Are there questions for Mr. Snipes? Yes, Sandy?
So, Mr. Snipes, when you're talking about infrastructure, are you talking about like the electrical units that the buses would use to charge?
Right.
The buses, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So when you say they're here, they're here by the end of 2020?
Yes, they, we have a manufacturer who we deal with is the same Dominion Energy manufacturer that they're dealing with, and they have four buses waiting.
So how would you go about getting the infrastructure in place? Is that a Dominion contract, or is it a WJCC contract, and Dominion reimburses us? And how does...
Dominion provides the infrastructure, and they pay for the infrastructure.
Dominion installs the infrastructure?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
And two questions. So where would this infrastructure be? Would it be out at operations so that it's convenient for the...
Typically, it would be out at operations, and that way we will be able to monitor it and evaluate.
Okay, well, I guess I now have three questions. So number two is, how far do one of these buses run on a charge?
Usually about 100 to 135 miles a day.
So that would be a complete best run. And then I guess the third one is, are mechanics going to be trained in the repair of these?
Yes, the mechanics will also be trained with the repair and maintenance at Dominion Energy's cost.
Okay. And who's paying for that training? Is Dominion paying for that?
Dominion Energy.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question sort of builds on Mrs. Young's. So in terms of staffing, I hear that...
So in terms of staffing, I hear that Dominion will be paying to train our staff, but will we need any additional staff to have kind of two fleets that run on separate fuse? Are there any issues with having kind of two mini fleet that runs differently than a bigger fleet?
There are no, there are no additional issues.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hummel?
Thanks for answering all the questions earlier. I see one of the last answers was that if Dominion Energy approves this initiative for Phase Two and Three, then Phase Two of the project with state approval would expand the program to bring 1,000 electric school buses online by 2025. Can you expand a little more on that? Is that a thousand school buses? Like, what does that mean?
I would, I would have to find out if it was just the state of Virginia, but it was because there were fifty were for the state of Virginia.
Okay.
I believe it is the state of Virginia, and they're going to expand it over those two amounts over the next several years, and we will obviously apply again for more, and as the buses come online, we'll be monitoring just how effective they are as well, and maintenance costs.
Mr. Dow?
Yeah, thank you. I was curious if you can tell me, what does the relationship look like after we've accumulated a number of buses over a set number of years, and really in relation to the training that we are receiving from Dominion? Is there a long, ongoing relationship with Dominion?
I don't, I don't understand, are you asking if we're partnering with Dominion for?
Retraining, recertifying, whatever that, you know, relationship looks like, the training piece?
I can, I can ask if there's a recertification or any other additional training, how that will look.
This is a multi-year endeavor relationship with Dominion?
Well, when we purchased the buses, they're ours for fifteen years on our bus replacement plan, so we need to be able to. There and maintain the buses. Now, I don't know if we'll get the second phase or a third phase, so.
This is a, these four buses, this is a first of, I guess, a few buses that we're wanting to get from Dominion over a number of years?
Yeah, each school division applies, and we don't know if we will get any more under this arrangement or not, but we're excited to get four, because it gives us a chance to really see how they operate within our system, with the intention of, over time, to diversify in our fleet more. It's hard to imagine us going to a totally electric fleet, but over time, we certainly will add to them, because the initial cost of the buses is significantly more, and we want to make sure that the, what they create in terms of savings is actually there before we diversify the whole fleet.
But so there's, what I'm hearing is there's no guarantee that we will get additional buses next year?
No.
We'd have to reapply.
No, sir, but you'll notice in the capital improvement plan tonight, when we start to bring on a new elementary school, usually that comes with a capital purchase for buses as well, and we purposely put the five new buses that we will next buy as brand-new and not replacement buses as electric buses for your consideration this evening, and that would enable us to begin to expand the fleet and help the environment as well.
Is Dominion the only one that's producing or supplying these buses, these types of buses?
They're the only one that we're dealing with. There may be other vendors out there that's doing it, but we don't know.
And they sought us out, they sought our region, our?
Actually, this was an initiative from Dominion Energy with the state, and so they, that's how this came about. It didn't seek us out, it was an application that we put in.
Just two other questions. You caught my attention when you said vehicle-to-grid technology. I don't understand what that means.
Well, what happens is when the buses are stored, the batteries aren't in use, and when they're hooked up, they can be used to charge other, it can be used on the technology grid, on the grid for Dominion Energy. They store battery power, and then they can be used when they're not even.
I was interested by this program. Because of the way that it's designed, Dominion is willing to pay the offset for old vehicles or diesel vehicles versus their vehicles. Are there any other programs that they have similar to this for schools?
We're not aware of any right now, but certainly we're on the lookout for programs like this. Many other divisions had the opportunity to start this last year, and many have diversified their fleet to some extent already, so this is our first opportunity to really buy buses at the same price as normal, but actually get electric buses, and to have the whole infrastructure put in at the same time really gives us an opportunity to do that, otherwise it would be very expensive to do that. And it's really an initiative from the state level to, you know, create a greener environment.
As I, I'm sorry?
In addition to school buses, Dr. Heron, we'll recall that we also are on different schedules with Dominion Energy to help us save money and energy during the summer months when we're not in use. We're on what they call A days, and during the winter, we're on B days, so they're allowed that, that energy cost goes down during the summer.
That's kind of where my mind was tracking, is, you know, Dominion being a partner in savings across the board for our division, and buses is one, of course, but, you know, our buildings. So as I looked at this program, I kind of thought to myself, I wonder, you know, if what their interest is in solar, you know, for buildings, for example, and do they have programs like that, similar to their bus program, where they provide some offset to the cost of putting panels on our buildings? Something that kind of went through my head as I was looking at this program. But those are all my questions, I appreciate.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. Other additional questions? Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, first of all, I think this, I think this program is great, so don't take all these questions as, you know, we're just.
No, we never do.
I think a little bit of, a little bit of this, this is too good to be true type thing. How many miles is our bus, do our buses go in a day? Average-ish?
I think they do nineteen thousand miles a year. We'd have to divide that by two hundred and sixty days, so I couldn't do that math right off the top of my head.
The answer is a lot.
Less than a hundred.
Somebody do the math for me. Just know it's nineteen, I know we average nineteen thousand a year.
So it's less, it's less than a hundred. So, and so we're sure the batteries and the motors last fifteen years?
That's what their representative and Dominion Energy is telling us, fifteen-year battery life.
Okay.
And then they say, once the batteries, once after the fifteen years, they can be used in buildings, we just need to figure out where they, how that works, like.
Do the buses recharge themselves? Or is it just a charge and then it drains? Do the buses recharge?
I would have to ask, I know there's a charging station.
I'm just, I'm just an engineer asking questions, because he's curious, so I'm good, thanks.
Any additional questions for Mr. Snipes? Then I'll just ask, I know this was on an SPQ, but what percentage of our fleet would be represented with these four buses?
It's four out of a hundred and sixty, so it's, it's less than, it's about twenty-five.
Any additional questions?
One, just, it says it's a fifteen-year bus replacement.
Bus replacement plan cycle is fifteen years.
So is this, is it a different lifespan electric bus?
Battery life is fifteen years, so they are, this replacement plan would also be fifteen.
Okay, thanks, that's it.
Oh. Mr. Snipes, could you speak to seat belts?
Yes, what would you like to know?
With regard to these new buses?
Yes, they will have seat belts on them, what they call a three-point harness, where three students can sit in a seat. You figure a seat belt, a seat, bus seat is about thirty-six inches wide, so you'd have three seat belts.
That's different than our other buses.
Yes, that is correct.
And will students be required to use the seat belts?
Students are not required to use the seat belts, because it is not a state law that they be required to use the seat belts.
But is it Dominion that requires the seat belts, or all the electric buses come with seat belts?
Dominion requires the seat belts when we purchased this, when we.
I think it's part of the initiative that was put in place across the state, that every new bus that comes out as an electric bus will have a seat belt. We, if mandatory law to do that was going through the Senate or through the legislature a couple of years ago, but it didn't pass.
It can be encouraged, they just can't be required.
Right, sir.
Any additional comments? Okay, I think we'll, thank you, Mr. Snipes. We will move on to item six point four, amend the school year twenty twenty-one calendar, and this is a proposed agenda item, but we're also acting on this tonight. I'm going to toss it over to Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, with COVID nineteen and a lot of things changing this year, and in a remote environment, there are many changes that need to be made to the school calendar, and Mr. Kiefer is going to speak about those this evening. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. Tonight, administration brings forward a presentation that offers details for three topics related to the WJCC school calendar. In the first place, we will detail specific proposed modifications for the fall semester of the 2021 school calendar. Later this evening, I believe that's also part of the board agenda for potential, potential for you to approve our recommendation. The second portion of the presentation this evening will offer the board an idea of potential modifications that will be necessary in the spring semester of 2021, and in the final portion of our presentation this evening, we'll seek feedback from the school board in advance of the process to build the twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three school calendars. On this slide, you will note five specific calendar modifications we are bringing forward with the WJCC return to learn plan and beginning the school year on Path One, and as we head to Path Two, there were several needed shifts. As a reminder, our 2021 school calendar was approved by the board well before the close, the closure of school relative to COVID. For example, back-to-school nights are listed in our calendar. However, as we started the school year on Path One, each of our schools hosted some form of open house virtually, in an effort to ensure our students and their parents felt prepared to begin the school year in that virtual setting. To that end, we suggest formally removing the designated dates, September twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. In Path One, students are receiving instruction virtually, and therefore, the idea of using the established early release dates in October are not necessary. Please know that secondary teachers will use the week of October nineteenth through twenty-third to conduct parent conferences in a virtual setting. While not on the slide, we did want to remind the board that those, and those watching, that on Tuesday, November third, Election Day, it's not a school day for students. In addition, instructional staff will be permitted and encouraged to work remotely. As you know, eleven of our sixteen schools are used as polling places. With our start on Path One and transition to Path Two beginning October twenty-sixth, the idea of early release days in November for elementary schools to host parent conferences was certainly less critical. As such, we are recommending the removal of the three early release dates from November eighteenth through November twenty. Similar to the secondary scenario, elementary teachers will host virtual parent conferences the week of November sixteen through November twenty. And finally, as WJCC shifted to year-long courses at the high school level for 2021, the need for designated early release day for exams at the end of the first semester became unnecessary. We are recommending the removal of the early release days on January twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. I can pause there, and we can take questions, or I can go and talk a little bit about potential modifications for spring, depending upon the pleasure of the board.
Do we have questions? Questions? Keep going. Keep going.
Thank you. On this slide, we share several items under consideration as we explore calendar needs in the spring semester of 2021. As we transition into Path Two and then Paths Three and Four, we will come back to the school board with likely modification recommendations. We will again look at early release days that are currently designated. We will review the parent conference days that are on the calendar. We do need to consider adding a day for high school exams in June. Additionally, we will review the Juneteenth holiday designation and carefully consider graduation day for WJCC, which is currently slated for June nineteenth. And then finally, again, we can pause for questions or keep, keep rolling.
Questions now? I think we have questions now.
We have a filter where graduation is going to be?
We have not got a place for that graduation yet. William and Mary Hall, they're not solidifying those requests, and it doesn't appear that it will be available at this point in time.
I think we would also want to take into consideration challenges and scenarios around, relative to the number of people and venues and gatherings, and that's a piece that you dealt with at the end of last year, certainly. Most school divisions dealt with that, and I think that we, we need some time to continue working through potential contingencies.
What, what is the, I should probably know this, but what, like, right now, what's our maximum number of people that can gather even with social distance? Like, a hundred, is it?
Fifty, I think.
Fifty?
Two hundred and fifty.
I believe so.
Okay, and then, were there, were there different stages where it gets to?
There are different phases. I don't believe we've made the, the step as a state from Phase Three to Phase Four, but I, and I'm not exactly sure of the parameters around that next phase.
That's what I, you know, I'm thinking about it for any large gathering, because typically graduate, how many people are, for a high school graduation, like Jamestown, how, how many people are at Kaplan Arena typically?
I'm sure a thousand, Ms. Fox, at least, if not more.
Depending upon how many tickets you allow per graduate, it would, as an example, typically they get graduations, I've been responsible for and familiar with, are somewhere in the range of thirty-five hundred to five thousand attendees, depending on number of graduates, the number of tickets you assign.
That's what it seems. We'd have, so the state of Virginia would have to be at the point where we would allow more than, more than a thousand or fifteen hundred with extremely limited tickets.
Okay, isn't it a waiting game? I mean, we have to, we're kind of at the, not, I won't, I hate the word mercy, but we, we have to follow the state guidelines, so it's hard to make some of these decisions without being in a place where we can make them.
We would agree. One of the reasons that we are bringing this forward now is to begin to get it on the radar screen for not only the board, but certainly our community, that we are going to continue to look at. We do have a designated graduation day, it's June nineteenth. We have, it's on the calendar. Again, it was on the calendar prior to the Juneteenth holiday established by the governor. It was on the calendar prior to COVID and some of the challenges that we've encountered with large group gatherings as a result of COVID. But, but we will work administratively to bring forward several contingencies, because we know families plan around graduation events and graduation days, and it's important to communicate that as early as possible.
Cook?
So I have a question that doesn't have to be answered now, but just with regard to the Juneteenth holiday designation. Holidays in June or days off in June is something that we have historically not offered because of the, it's so late in the semester. So for instance, I'm thinking about primary elections, and so if, I'm just curious if thinking about Juneteenth and how that plays into the calendar, whether that's changed your thinking about primary elections, and I'm not, I'm not asking for an answer now, but when you come back with that consideration, if you could be prepared to talk about that for a second, you know, including in that in your conversation, that'd be great. And then, I just, I guess I'm seeking clarity around the bullet point, consider graduation day for WJCC. What does that mean? Are you talking logistics? Are you talking the actual date? Might that change?
I think it will depend on the venue. We're obviously actively seeking a venue for a Plan A and a Plan B, so we've got to look at all the options and then bring some considerations back to the board for your information. Nothing is in stone right now.
Okay.
The date is still on the calendar. If we were to find a venue that was appropriate with maybe less students, possibly, then that might change the, the date.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Dow?
My, my one question is revolving around the review Juneteenth holiday designation. For me, I think I'm, I'm in support of it if it is, you know, if it is a local or state or federal holiday. And so you mentioned the governor enacted this holiday. Is that accurate, or has he sent it out to the legislature?
Correct, he designated the holiday and is asking for legislative approval, I believe, for it to become a state holiday.
We're not there yet.
Well, you may recall that in June of twenty, he, he created the state holiday for state employees, as I, as I remember.
That's right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. For his own employees.
Correct.
Okay.
There are some school divisions across the Commonwealth that also provided that day, or a day, whether it was the nineteenth or soon thereafter, as a day off of work as a result of that designation from the government. a result of that designation from the governor.
Thank you.
Though it doesn't have official legislative approval yet.
So is the issue that if the governor designates Juneteenth, which is in 2021, June 19th, which is the same day as our graduation, are we in effect not, do we, and we have a graduation on a state holiday?
One of the reasons that I think we're bringing this forward is that June 19th is a Saturday.
Right.
And oftentimes, when there are designated holidays that fall on a weekend, different bodies make a determination to honor that day either preceding or post the event. I think we would want to talk through, is it appropriate for graduations, if we can do them, to occur on the 19th? Is it appropriate to designate a different day as a way to recognize the holiday because it falls on a Saturday, as an example?
But right now, it's not an official state holiday. It's just the governor's giving state employees a day off.
Correct.
I think that if it does become a state holiday, that yeah, we recognize that as a state holiday, and I think that graduation needs to be on a separate day.
We don't, we, I'm sorry. I guess that would be good to know. Do we recognize all state holidays? Because I'm not sure that we do.
We do not.
I didn't think so.
Well, it's also possible that by that time, it could be a national holiday.
Our purpose in bringing it to you this evening was to be sure that it was in your mind as an area that we're going to need to continue to talk about and have dialogue around in advance of making some firm decisions on graduation, quite honestly.
We'll receive an update. Sounds like we'll be talking about this in the future.
Yes, ma'am. The final piece of the presentation this evening, we are beginning the process regionally. The Regional Calendar Committee gets together on the 15th of October, and not too far after that, we'll also convene the WJCC Calendar Committee to really look at and consider building out a calendar for 2122 and 2223. And one item that I think that you are familiar with is that in September 21, Rosh Hashanah falls on September the 7th, which is the first day of school. Know that some other divisions, maybe not necessarily on the peninsula, but in the Hampton Roads area, are having some real careful discussions around how to approach the first day of school with Rosh Hashanah on the 7th, and wanted to put that in front of this board. Additionally, was interested in your feedback and/or priority areas as it relates to developing the 2122 calendar and 2223 calendar. If there are specific areas that you would like for us to focus on as we build out potential versions and models for the board.
So Labor Day is on Monday, September 6th. I just looked up Rosh Hashanah because it starts on Monday, 7th and 8th.
Leave it sundown?
Like looking at my Google.
The High Holy Days information that we received from...
Because it begins in the evening of Monday, September 6th, and then ends. And Labor Day is the Monday.
Correct.
And generally, we start the day after Labor Day, which is the...
That Tuesday.
But we don't have to.
We don't have to because the law now provides some opportunity to start before Labor Day.
So when Dr. Murphy brought this to our attention several months ago, I know there were several board members who had comments about this, I believe Ms. Cook. And I both spoke to the fact that we would not want to start, we would not want the first day of school to fall on Rosh Hashanah. And I can't remember what the rest of my colleagues' comments were at that board meeting at Mounts Bay a few months ago. Ms. Cook?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I agree with your assessment and think that it would be, it would be good to avoid starting the first day of school on a High Holy Day of a major religion. I think also, I just would ask staff to really analyze the impact on students and staff as well, just in terms of numbers. We've really focused on that regional calendar for a long time, and as the numbers of early college start to outpace the numbers of New Horizons, does that shift, you know, our thinking in terms of sticking to that regional calendar? And so I would just appreciate your analysis around that issue and your recommendation. I think because of the restrictions around starting prior to Labor Day, I mean, we can now, but there's some, it's not, you know, it's not completely without restriction. We may never be able to get completely in line with the higher education semester calendar. But it seems to me that closer is better than not. So I just would appreciate staff's sort of analysis of whether or not we should stick with that regional calendar.
Ms. Young?
I'm just wondering, how many other major holidays of religions do we not have school or delay school activities? I mean, I'm not against having a change, and it would affect our calendar, but I would like to know if there are other religions that we suspend activities for.
We can bring you that information. Obviously, the winter holiday includes Christmas Day.
Right, of course.
But we're in school on Good Friday, aren't we?
Yes.
We are.
And I don't think anyone's saying, "Don't have school on, you know, on Rosh Hashanah." I just think it's the first day of school.
Right, and I understand that.
Is that right?
It's the first day of school. Families and, and I guess I would want to know how that affected the calendar throughout the year.
Additional comments? I did look up Rosh Hashanah, doesn't happen before September for the next, like...
Forever.
Like keeps moving slowly.
I think from an academic calendar perspective, you know, if there are good reasons to move the calendar and start earlier, next year is again one of those years where it's easier to do for staff because the Labor Day is late again. So you have two years when Labor Day is a little bit later, and you still have your long summer. And so if there is a time that we do consider moving it before Labor Day, this may be one of those times for the academic calendar. But we'll certainly bring that analysis. I know Mr. Keever's going to take your thoughts into the Calendar Committee and come back with some options for your consideration, and we'll bring that analysis of New Horizons as well and the regional calendar. So yes, Ms. Hummel?
There was also, when we were talking before, there was also, if you could, in your analysis, talk about the AP tests and when they're scheduled, and because it seems to be advantageous to our students to have an extra week of school for some of those standardized tests. It just helps the teachers be able to get through the material to prepare.
Any additional comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keever. All right, we are moving on to Information and Discussion Item 7.1, Capital Development Committee's Recommendations for FY '22 to 2030.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, Ms. Ewing is here to present the committee's recommendation for the capital improvement plan for this year. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. As we begin the fiscal year '22 budget process, you will recall that several years ago, the process for determining the capital improvement budget was brought forward in the planning and approval process so that it is completed prior to the operating budget. This was done so that we would be able to provide our needs to our funding partners, allowing them adequate time to prepare their budgets and allocate the resources needed to fund the school division's projects. This evening, I will be presenting to you the recommendations of the Capital Improvement Plan Committee and provide a preliminary look at the needs and applicable costs for those needs of the school division. Administration will continue to evaluate and fine-tune the projects and alignment of the projects in preparation for presentation of the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan in November. It is important to note that while we continue to be good stewards of taxpayer money, especially during the pandemic, we must plan for necessary repairs and improvements to facilities. Neglecting our buildings and failure to plan for the future could result in emergency costs or larger investments in the long run. The information presented tonight represents that of a working document that will evolve until the school board's approval in December and possibly even until the final adoption in May. Included at your seat is a spreadsheet showing the CIP committee's recommended 10-year plan for your reference. Any additions to the current adopted plan are either highlighted in green if they've been added in the first five years, or highlighted in yellow if they've been added in years six through 10. Amounts highlighted in orange indicate a change in year or amount from the fiscal year '21 adopted plan. The Capital Improvement Plan Development Committee consisted of several members from senior leadership, school leadership, as well as three community members. Process began this summer to ensure adequate time prior to the operating budget development to focus on the capital improvement plan. In our process and timeline, we have also built into the schedule time prior to the school board approval for the public to voice its opinion through two public comment sessions. This timeline also allows the school board time to review the recommendations prior to its approval in December. Principals were asked to submit requests for projects this summer, and operations was asked to provide information on division-wide projects and routine maintenance schedules as well. The committee then reviewed and evaluated the requests to determine whether projects met the criteria to go forward as a capital improvement project. Committee met on two separate occasions in August and September. Information provided to the committee included enrollment projections as compared to building capacities. This information was from a year ago, as updated enrollment projections are not available until later this month or early next month. Project requests received from schools and the current school board adopted capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2021 through 2030. In order to be included in the capital improvement plan, the estimated cost of a project must be greater than $50,000. Committee reviewed each project request received from schools and departments to determine if it should be included. The committee also reviewed the current plan to determine if a project should be moved to a different year. To ensure open communication, we will share the outcome of the decisions made with principals and cost center managers who have submitted project requests on behalf of their buildings and staff. As a point of reference and for information, our funding partners adopt a five-year capital improvement plan, but funds are appropriated on an annual basis. Several years ago, the school board began developing a 10-year plan which enables the division to project and plan for future needs beyond the five-year plan, and also gives our funding partners adequate time and opportunity to prepare and budget for capital projects. The estimates for projects in the capital improvement plan include 10% for A and E, 5% for contingency, and an annual escalation rate of 3% per annum. Any project may appear in the CIP for the first time due to new or updated information, for example, new state requirements or mandates or for safety reasons. As funding is appropriated annually, tonight, our initial focus is on fiscal year '22. We will review the changes for fiscal year '22 from the adopted fiscal year '21 five-year plan, and we will also review modifications to the current plan that may have arisen from need or changes in cost estimates. As you know, due to COVID-19, all CIP projects were moved out by at least one year during this past budget cycle, and we had no projects funded in fiscal year '21. Due to this shift, costs for all projects have been escalated to account for this movement. The only exception is the division combined projects for parking and playgrounds, as those are given as a flat amount each year. During last year's process, the need for a 10th elementary school was established. However, our funding partners prioritize preschool space over a new school. The committee believes that the need for a school still exists and is recommending that the new elementary school be moved back up into fiscal years '23 and '24, and the preschool space moved out to fiscal year '27. We have also combined the parking lot sidewalk and concrete repairs to be one project and proposing stable funding at $300,000 each year to address maintenance issues in these areas. Playground equipment funding is also proposed to have stable funding at $100,000 each year to address playground equipment replacements. Construction funding for the War Hill expansion and Lafayette renovation are recommended to be moved back into fiscal year '23 from fiscal year '24 to address space needs at the high school level. New school buses are typically included when a school is built through the CIP, so you will see that we have added a request for five buses to align with the 10th elementary school. These buses are proposed to be electric buses to expand on the electric bus fleet, which you heard about earlier this evening. Additions to the existing plan in years six through 10 or fiscal year '2027 through '2031 include the following. Based on the current roof replacement cycle, roof replacements for DJ Montague, Blatant and Hornsby in fiscal year '31. Based on the current HVAC replacement cycle, HVAC replacements for Blatant and Hornsby have been added, with the cost split across fiscal years '30 and '31. Parking lot sidewalk and concrete repair funding has been added in fiscal years '29 through '31 to maintain level funding of $300,000 each year, as well as playground funding in those same years to maintain level funding of $100,000 each year. We have also reviewed refurbishment projects in fiscal years '27 through '31 and split the cost of larger projects like refurbishments and HVAC replacements over two years. We've provided a spreadsheet showing you the total budget by project and allocated by school. The next few slides will summarize the next five years by project type. The first area is for HVAC and window projects. This area accounts for 20% of the total five-year CIP, or $17,131,400. Roof replacements, school refurbishments, and renovation projects account for 8% of the total five-year budget, or $7,275,700. Projects grouped into the other category include items such as walk-in refrigerator, freezer replacements for cafeterias, generator replacements, electrical repairs, as well as division-wide projects such as parking, brickwork, and playground equipment. The total cost estimated over the next five years is $7,271,900, or 8%. Total cost for construction is estimated at $57,412,300, which is 65% of the five-year budget for capital improvements. This is a summary of the budget for our five-year plan, which totals $89,91,300. To highlight our major projects, fiscal year '22 contains the design for the Lafayette renovation, as well as construction funds for the War Hill auxiliary gym. Fiscal year '23 contains construction of the expansion at War Hill and the design of the new elementary school, as well as the construction for Lafayette's renovation. Fiscal year '24 contains the construction of the new elementary school and the design of Jamestown's expansion. In fiscal year '25, the construction of Jamestown's expansion is incorporated. Fiscal year '26 includes funds for electric buses and construction funds for the Stonehouse HVAC replacement. Next steps in the process include an opportunity for public comments on October 20th, followed by the presentation of the superintendent's proposed CIP on November 10th, and the school board's prioritization of projects. Would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, Ms. Young?
I'm, can you go back to where you were talking about? I know that the Board of Supervisors asked that we provide preschool space prior to the elementary school, so what precipitated us changing that?
What is changing? I'm sorry.
I mean, my understanding was that the Board of Supervisors wanted us to provide preschool space before a new elementary school was built. Am I mistaken? I have been before many times, so.
I don't know the details of what they had requested. I know that they moved the preschool space before the elementary school, and so based on... on the information that the committee has, the committee felt that the need for the 10th elementary school still exists, and that it should come before the preschool space.
I'm just surprised that we're ignoring the request of the Board of Supervisors.
This is just the committee's recommendation. Over the next couple of months, the superintendent will be presenting her CIP, and then the board has the opportunity to make any changes that they feel should be made prior to we... prior to us submitting it to the county and the city.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and I know you stated this, Ms. Ewing, but just to restate it, that this is not the superintendent's recommendation. This is review of what the committee's recommendation was to her, and so based on enrollment numbers, which will be coming out in the next couple of weeks, this may change.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's our opportunity to kind of respond to it, but we have more time to respond to it if needed.
Correct.
So my first question is that in fiscal year 22, it's 8.3 million, which is the lowest number of the 10 years. Was that intentional? Was that sort of based on the, I guess, our collective assumption that the next fiscal year is probably going to be pretty difficult financially, or was that just how it happened?
Yeah. We didn't shift any projects. So all of the projects in fiscal 22 were originally proposed in fiscal 21 and have been shifted to fiscal 22. So based on the county and city's adopted plan for this year, it showed funding for us at about 7.9 million.
Okay. So we're a little bit above that, but not...
Right, because when they shifted the projects, they don't account for escalation.
Okay. Thank you. And then back to the elementary school question that Mrs. Young brought up. I think... I thank you for putting the elementary school first. I think our data has been clear, and I think it's important to trust the educational experts on what kind of educational spaces it did. So I fully and completely support that, and I think that our funders have stated publicly that we made the case on that, and so I'm hoping that we can have the opportunity to hopefully get a different and better outcome for this next CIP discussion. And then I have a question about the War Hill projects. So design isn't in here, and is that because that's already been funded?
Yes, the design for the War Hill projects was included in fiscal 20. It's just been placed on hold due to COVID.
Okay, so that will be coming back to us eventually, or will we wait for those projects to be funded before we go into design, even though the design has been funded?
I just need to confirm with the county in regards to cash flow as to when we could pick up those projects that we put on hold.
I really like the parking lot and playground, steady funding. You know, I hope eventually that sticks. I know that's usually, you know, kind of easily picked off, but I like that you keep putting that in there, and I appreciate it. I think it helps. I have a question about sort of process. You mentioned that principals submit requests. Is there any kind of effort to examine those requests for parity? So if I'm, you know, principal of school A and I ask for, you know, kind of brand-new everything, and I'm principal of school B, and I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, it's a tough financial year, maybe I won't ask, I'll hold off, like, so do you have a process to examine whether there's parity across the schools, if there's a difference in the amount that principals request, for instance?
Oh, yes. Some of the requests that we get, operations does take a look to see, to ensure that, well, if this school is requesting it, do the other schools already have it, or is it something we need to also look at for the other schools as well? Most of the requests that we got this year were for items that were, didn't meet the threshold, or were already included in the CIP.
And who were the community members who served on the...
Michael Willen from the PTA Council, and the interim facilities director at William &amp; Mary, Sam Hayes, and Randy, from town management, I don't recall his last name. He's been on the committee.
Casey Redlin, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And then just one last comment, and I know this isn't the year, because funding is going to be really difficult next year, but at some point, I would love to see a new construction area, even if it's in this, you know, second five years, just a real honest look at the athletic and arts facilities that we need that are commensurate with the quality of our programs. I mean, when I think about, you know, our tracks and, you know, fields and pools and things that our students kind of have to struggle to use, you know, it might be a stretch in a wish list that we'll never get, but I hate to not at least acknowledge that we need it. Oh, and then one more question about the War Hill partial refurbishment. I really applaud the going from full refurbishment to partial refurbishment to be more fiscally conservative, but what concerns me about that is that there isn't another look at the partial refurbishment within the next 10 years. So if we're doing partial refurbishments only every 10 years or more, are the things that are not replaced because they weren't needed, there was no refurbishment needed on that part of the floor, if we're waiting a whole nother 10 years to look at it, does it degrade to the point where it no longer is up to par? So that partial refurbishment, I just, I mean, do you have any thoughts on that? I just worry about, you don't have to answer that, but when we do it partially, I worry about the parts we didn't do, how often we're looking at.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Additional questions? Mr. Dow?
Yeah, mine's not necessarily a question, although if you'd like to speak with it, to it, that's fine. More of a comment. I was looking at Berkeley, you know, they're looking at a year 22 baseball field refurbishment, and nothing against baseball players. I love baseball, my son plays baseball. But then a year 23 replace rubber roofs and canopy. I know Berkeley's been looking at that issue, a leaky roof, for many years now, and so I'm just, it seems a little out of whack, you know, the priority there, the roof, which if we don't take care of that, we have a greater issue with their roof down the road, and potentially floors down the road with a leaky roof versus a baseball field refurbishment. So that was the only thing that really stuck out to me that seemed a little out of priority, but I've not seen Berkeley's baseball field, so I don't know that for certain, but that's all I wanted to add.
Dow, additional comments or questions?
Yeah, sure. I would have to agree with the, just the one comment I've had seen tonight, or heard tonight, the elementary school moving back forward. I think, I think our data is pretty clear that, that we're going to need that elementary school space, and we're going to need it sooner versus later. I'm not exactly sure how the September 30 figures are going to play on that, because this is kind of a unique year. It'll be interesting what next year's looks like. We know what last year's looked like. We would assume that eventually we're going to get better, get back to where we were going, although with all the housing going up, you never can tell where those numbers are. But I do appreciate the committee's, committee's work and their, and their efforts in putting these numbers together, and I know it's a lot of, a lot of things to consider, and a lot of projects are out there. We have a lot of buildings, we have a lot of needs. And I also appreciate our funding partners' investments in our facilities. We have great facilities, and we just need to make sure we maintain that, so thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I completely agree. The infrastructure of our, our schools is excellent, and always has been, and it's been a source of pride, and I think we're setting a good... Not stick to the schedule that facilities top rate are on out. Yeah, I'm glad to see that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Thanks. One thing I forgot to mention, the electric buses additions, that's for the 1.25 billion. How many buses is that?
That's five buses.
Well, that's at the, at the market rate for a...
Full cost of $350,000.
Yeah, I would like to see some ROI on that. Granted, it's five years out, and I won't be voting on that, but, but I would like to see some ROI on that for making that much of an investment in, in school buses, when I could buy 17 almost, or 15 buses for the same number, so thank you.
Kelly. Ms. Hamel, did you have any additional thoughts? Ms. Young?
Just along with what Mr. Kelly said, so after we purchase these electric school buses, we will have data to know whether or not, Ms. Ewing, to know whether or not it's going to be worth it to the school division?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, we're going to monitor and provide data on the impact of the buses.
Okay, because I'd like to know the increased electrical cost also, that's going to happen.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I would just like to add, and so there is an opportunity possibly to continue to reach out for additional grant funding with Dominion, so we don't know if we would access that, but that could defray the cost of those. And then just want to reiterate what my colleagues have said. I think that we did make a very clear case for why we need a 10th elementary school, and so we'll be able to talk about that again this upcoming year. And, and like Dr. Beers said, our funding partners have done a really good job of maintaining our buildings, and it is, it's not as exciting to, you know, to, for roofs and, and floors, but those things are so important to maintain our buildings, and they are in really good shape, and so we don't want to slide backwards, because I've been to other divisions, and they're not as lucky as, as we are. So thank you for all the work on that.
Okay, moving on. Item 7.2, return to learn. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased to bring you a presentation tonight about some of the information about what returning to learn on Path 2 will look like from various standpoints, and also some information about how we made the decision to move forward to Path 2. And Mr. Walker is going to lead off this evening with return to learn. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. This evening, school administration will share a new COVID-19 dashboard and the metrics used when considering a move between paths on our return to learn plan. We will review health and safety protocols and provide information about preparations to bring back pre-K to third-grade students to classrooms on Path 2. As a reminder, each of our Forward WJCC schools' paths and our transition between them are based on guidance from the Virginia Department of Education, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the Virginia Department of Health. In all instances, health and education experts recommend mitigation strategies to promote healthy behaviors, and to the greatest extent possible, reduce the possibility for the continued spread of illness. Virginia Health Department recently revised its guidance for school divisions to align with the CDC. Chief Operating Officer Daniel Kiefer will explain what that means for WJCC schools and walk you through our new COVID-19 dashboard.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. The WJCC Schools COVID-19 Dashboard is designed to synthesize information from the CDC, Health Department, Virginia Department of Education for families, students, and staff. Located on the division website, www.wjccschools.org, the dashboard, say that fast a couple times, it's really complicated. The dashboard is updated daily, Monday through Friday, with data from the Virginia Department of Health. Tonight, I'll take just a couple minutes to walk you through the dashboard. At the very top of the page, visitors can quickly see a snapshot of the number of COVID-positive cases reported by staff members in relation to the number of employees working onsite, excuse me, and the number of students in school buildings for in-person learning. Right now, there are approximately 275 students with disabilities and English language learners back in our classrooms on a daily basis. Under those boxes, visitors to the webpage can click on the "Data" by "School" tab. That opens a table showing the number of COVID-positive cases reported by school and administrative office. This data is the total number of cases reported since the school year began July 1. Fortunately, each of the employees has either recovered or is currently recovering from COVID-19. On the right-hand side of the dashboard, you will see the Risk Transmission in Schools chart. These designations from lowest risk to highest risk are the levels identified by the CDC based on three core indicators. First indicator is the number of new cases per 100,000 persons within the last 14 days. Next indicator is the percentage of positive tests in the last 14 days, and the final core indicator is the ability of a school division to implement key mitigation strategies. First two indicators are reported daily by the Health Department. Here is the most recent data for Williamsburg and James City County. The numbers represent the cases and percent positive, while the colors of the blocks correspond to the CDC's levels for risk transmission in schools. You can see here that James City County is at a moderate risk for total number of cases, and the lowest risk level based on the percent positive for testing. Williamsburg is at a higher risk for number of cases, and lowest risk when looking at the positive, excuse me, when looking at the percent of positive cases. Division uses this data and recommendations from the Virginia Department of Education when deciding what path to be on, and how students, and how many students should be in school. Want to note that the orange color band ranges from the number 50 to the number 200. The dark green band signifies less than 3%. On the dashboard, users can click on any of the levels in the Risk of Transmission in Schools box, and immediately see which Forward WJCC Schools path it aligns with, as well as the recommendation from the Health Department and VDOE in terms of how to approach those levels. This is the information we consider and use to prepare for each path. As you can see, when a division is in moderate or higher risk for transmission, as we are currently, the recommendation is to prioritize in-person learning for vulnerable students, including students with disabilities, English language learners, and our youngest learners, pre-K through 3, who are in the earliest stages of their learning. You'll recall that I mentioned a third core indicator used by the CDC, the ability of school divisions to implement five key mitigation strategies, including consistent use of face coverings, social distancing, hand washing, and respiratory etiquette, which includes coughing into your elbow, cleaning and disinfection, and then contact tracing in collaboration with the local Health Department. To help reduce the number of potentially ill people in buildings, staff are conducting a self-assessment for health daily before reporting to work. Parents will be given a symptom checklist before their children return to school buildings. They are asked to complete the checklist each day to assess their child's health before sending them to school. After months of purposeful planning, how we will implement these strategies in careful consideration of the health data, Dr. Heron, as you know, announced that the division plans to transition to Path 2 beginning Monday, October 26.
You will recall that there are four paths in our return to learn Forward WJCC Schools Plan. Path 1 is remote learning for all of our students. Path 2, limited blended learning, which is a mix of remote learning and in-person learning at school for some special populations and by specific grade level. We actually brought some students back with disabilities and English learner students before we were formally on Path 2. The special education students returned on September 14, and our English language learners returned September 28. Path 3 would be blended learning for all of our students, K through 12, and Path 4 would be a return to on-site learning for all students. So what should families expect when we move to Path 2 on October 26? Well, students in grades 4 through 12 will continue to engage in new instruction through remote learning. Conditioning for winter sports will be allowed with strict guidelines in place. And students in kindergarten through grades... And students in kindergarten through grade three, as well as some students with disabilities and English language learners, will participate in blended learning, including both remote and in-person learning on alternating schedules with limited class size. All bright beginnings pre-K students will attend school onsite Monday through Thursday for approximately half a day program. Bus transportation will be provided with the requirement for all students to wear a face covering and adhere to the social distancing measures in place to the greatest extent possible. Parents will be required to assess students' wellness before sending them to school. And additionally, staff and students will wear face coverings while at school. With the transition to Path Two, the elementary school day, grades K through five, will be shortened by one hour. This is based on feedback from teachers and families and the desire to help them better manage workloads and screen time for our youngest students. On-site attendance days for students in kindergarten to grade three will be determined by the student's last name. Students whose last name begins with A through L will attend school in person on Monday and Tuesday with remote learning the remaining three days of the week. Students whose last names start with M through Z will take part in remote learning Monday and Tuesday, followed by their in-person learning Wednesday and Thursday, followed with Friday being a remote learning day for all students. This method will allow the majority of children to attend school in the same days as their siblings. Blended families with more than one last name should contact the school directly for assistance. As for instruction, in-person learning days will focus primarily on literacy and numeracy. Remote learning days will include independent activities that build on that in-person instruction that was received, as well as asynchronous centers lessons, including PE, music, art, and computers. Students and staff members will wear masks and social distancing will be in place to the greatest extent possible. Here are a few photos from a few classrooms across the division. The picture on the left shows an upper-level classroom with individual desks arranged to accommodate one group of students on the blue days and the other desks reserved for the next student group on the green days. On the right, you see a kindergarten classroom using tables. Only two children at a table, that usually seats four. Students will be using their own school supplies and materials throughout the day. Here, you see dots on the carpet where students will sit to provide for social distancing during examples of a morning meeting or storytime. And on the right, you see how the Plexiglas learning shields will be used during small group instruction with the teacher. The last picture shows the signage that is being used in hallways to help remind students about walking down one side of the hallway and staying apart. And on the left, you see a list of some of the personal protective equipment that has been provided to schools and employees, such as face coverings, face shields, Plexiglas learning shields, sanitizer, cleaner. Of course, a significant part of returning students to classrooms safely is our ability to keep the building clean. So next, Mr. Snipes will share the measures that we currently have in place.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Custodial teams will clean school buildings multiple times a day, paying particular attention to common areas and critical touchpoints, such as door handles, tables, stair rails, and other hard surfaces. They will use EPA-approved disinfectant and cleaning products that are recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. In addition to cleaning surfaces, we are completing preventive maintenance of HVAC systems more frequently. We've evaluated airflow, will upgrade filters, and have ordered air purifiers for those pre-K through three classrooms that are unable to accommodate upgraded filters. If a student or staff member becomes ill during the school day, enhanced cleaning will include disinfecting, sanitizing, carpet cleaning, filter changes, and use of the electrostatic spraying and fogging. Schools will use signs, such as the ones you see on the screen, to indicate that a room needs to be cleaned and that a room has been cleaned. Our custodial teams will also post a log to monitor cleaning practices throughout the building each day in, in classrooms, restrooms, and in cafeterias. On the bus, students and staff must wear a face covering and practice social distancing to the greatest extent possible. The stars on the diagram show the seating position of students in a rear-to-front, trailing, and staggered position. The maximum distance sitting parallel from each other is six feet, and the maximum distance sitting in the seat diagonal is four feet. The bus will be loaded from back to front to limit the number of passengers a student comes in contact with, with the only exception being kindergarten students who will always be seated at the front of the bus. Windows will be open whenever weather, whenever, whether it's possible, and that will increase air circulation on the bus. And drivers will intend to sanitize buses between each tier and thoroughly clean buses at the end of the morning and afternoon runs. As a note, the maximum capacity of many of our buses with social distancing is twenty-six students. At school, we plan to serve student meals in classrooms. Child nutrition staff will use carts to deliver meals, and trash will be collected by custodians at the end of breakfast and lunchtime. Grab and go meals will continue to be distributed to students who are learning remotely at our four established sites, James River, Matthew Whaley, James Blair, and Toano. We also intend to continue with our grab and go meal delivery. For pre-K through three students, weekend meals will be sent home, if needed, on the last day the child is in class for that week.
Good evening. As Mr. Walker mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, our transition to Path Two also brings a return to conditioning for student athletes at our high schools. This is conditioning and not practice. It is an opportunity to help student athletes build strength and get back into shape after an extended period away. On the screen, you see the timeline for return to conditioning by season, beginning with winter sports on October twenty-sixth, soon followed by fall sports on November ninth, and spring sports on January fifteenth. The wellness of our student athletes and coaches is a top priority. How will we, how will student athletes take part in conditioning as safely as possible? First, conditioning will take place outside. There will be no shared equipment. Students will bring their own water bottles and towels. Hand sanitizing stations will be located on fields for athletes. Specific restrooms will be identified for student athletes during conditioning. And students will work out in pods of up to nine students plus one coach, and will remain with their pod throughout the conditioning season. Students will also remain in cars until checked in for conditioning, and coaches will be trained on protocol prior to the beginning of conditioning. Parents and guardians will also have to read the return to sports conditioning document and provide an electronic signature on the acknowledgement form. Families will support student athletes by making sure they conduct a self-check each day by using the student symptom checker form each day before returning to conditioning. Schools, athletic directors, and coaches will communicate with students about dates, times, and expectations. We are also looking at our timeline to introduce middle school conditioning and to consider what other types of student activities can be done safely in a remote and blended learning environment as we move forward on Path Two and look ahead to Path Three.
We know that the transition to Path Two will be an adjustment for our families and staff, but we also know how important it is to have our youngest learners onsite with their teachers even two days a week. What does the move mean for teachers and for staff? Beginning October twenty-sixth, all elementary school instructional staff, pre-K to grade five, will work onsite four days a week. Non-instructional staff will work their current schedule. For most people, that's five days a week. Middle and high school instructional staff will work in their buildings four days a week beginning November ninth, which is the start of the second nine weeks. And as a note, most teachers are already teaching remotely from their classrooms several days during the week. To support the childcare needs of staff, the division is creating student learning centers at each elementary school where pre-K through grade three teachers can bring their school-aged children while these teachers have students in their own classrooms. The learning centers will maintain a small pod of children who will be supervised by a WJCC staff member, such as a teaching assistant. Grade four through twelve teachers who have school-aged children will still be allowed to bring their kids with them to their classrooms as long as they are teaching remotely and have submitted the Path Two childcare form. Fridays will continue to be used for collaborative planning and professional development. And as a reminder, students are learning asynchronously on Fridays by completing work independently. What does this mean for employees? Instructional staff will facilitate remote and/or onsite instruction. This allows the division to deliver high-quality instruction for students while supporting staff who may fall into an at-risk category identified by state and local health officials or their healthcare provider. Employees working at schools and offices will complete daily self-assessments for wellness and wear face coverings in the presence of others. On Path Two, teachers will continue to have virtual office hours. Operationally, buildings will be open to families and the public by appointment only. Volunteer activities are limited to virtual and online activities only. And for now, building rentals will be prohibited. The majority of the change on Path Two is for students in grades pre-K to third. So next, Mr. Landers will provide an update on the remote learning resources, connectivity, and support for students in grades four through twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. The Technology Department has moved into a support model. After twenty-one days of laptop and tablet distribution that saw ten thousand eighty-five devices distributed across all grade levels, eight thousand and nine laptops were distributed to grades three through twelve, and two thousand seventy-six tablets were distributed to grades K through two. In attempting to make sure that every student has an opportunity to connect to the internet, the division has offered several options. We have partnered with the Williamsburg Regional Library in sharing their mobile wireless schedule, as well as offering our own mobile wireless on wheels, which includes eight vehicles visiting various, various areas of the community Monday through Friday. We have partnered with the county and Cox Communications to ensure that eligible families are able to benefit from the Connect to Compete program. We have also offered mobile hotspot units for checkout to students that are in need. As of today, we had seventy-two students that had not yet signed into Student View and their parent had not signed into Parent View. We see this as perhaps the best indicator that a student may not have access to the internet when both the student and parent accounts have not logged in. We are actively reaching out to these families, and so far, we have processed ninety-eight MiFi requests for students. On average, we have approximately sixty-two hundred student connections through our firewall at any given time. Note that students' synchronous and asynchronous schedules do vary, so this number would be expected as a little more than half of our students at any given time. As we have moved into a support model, we have processed over three thousand TechConnect tickets since school opening. This averages to around one hundred and eighty per day. We are starting to see the expected drop-off in requests for service as the first two weeks averaged nearly two hundred and seventy-five per day, and we are now seeing a little over one hundred per day. In trying to provide service while also maintaining the needed COVID-safety protocols, we are now offering in-person service by appointment. We first attempt to resolve any issues over the phone, but when in-person service is needed, they are able to come to one of two locations for support.
Madam Chair, that concludes our return to learn Forward WJCC Schools update for this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, that was a lot of information. Comments, questions? Ms. Young?
I was just asking a question about what, on the chart that you showed earlier, where you have the COVID-19 dashboard. Do we know what the demographics were for those people afflicted with COVID from JCC and, and Williamsburg? Do we have any idea? Are they older or younger? Are they, I guess I'm referring more towards our college students? Is that where most of these cases are, do we know?
I believe all of that information is on the VDH website where you can drill down and find some of the information. I'm not sure that we have those numbers tonight, Mr. Kiefer, I don't think so.
We don't.
Okay, I can check, thank you.
I, to follow her question, that was one of my questions. When I look at the, the core indicators for the city of Williamsburg at a hundred and twenty, and, and that ends up being a high, higher risk, and then I, I look at the peninsula numbers, and it's based on the fact that the city of Williamsburg is small. Which brings my, my curiosity as to whether or not the college students are included in those numbers. And because I, I talked to Sam Jones the other night at William, he's the, he's William and Mary's COVID response person, and he said they're definitely sending those cases to the Peninsula Department of Health. I'm just curious if the math is right.
Yeah, the Virginia Department of Health doesn't provide that level of information to us, but what I do know, they don't count rabid testing. They only count a certain type of testing, which I can't remember the exact name of right now.
Ours.
Yes. And so we, we don't get that information to that level because it's confidentially reported to them. So we assume that the tests are included unless they're, they're a rabid test.
I guess it's just to me, when I look at the city of Williamsburg and I look at these numbers and I, and I'll have to do some drilling on my own, but it just seems to me to be very, very high for the city of Williamsburg, and it begs the question, are all the students included in that number for the denominator to be-
We'll certainly ask again this Thursday at our weekly meeting and see can we gather any more information that would help us understand our local data, because I think your questions are very pertinent.
Sandy, can I just jump on that real quick? On our COVID-19 dashboard, we talk, we say five staff positive tests since July first. I think, and I understand the desire to count that, to count that number, but I think it'd also be kind of useful to have number of active cases.
Yes.
So that, so that you have a metric that you have a chance of winning. And how many, how many do we actually have right now? So I mean, that number's going to go fluctuate up and down. And so if you see that number start to increase, that makes concern. If you see it start to decrease, that, you can draw other conclusions from that too, so.
Cumulative is not so helpful.
Thank you, that's very helpful, and we'll certainly work on that one.
Dr. Beer?
Yeah, I'm curious about, and I only haven't been doing this terribly long, but I'd like to know what kind of [inaudible] getting from teachers, parents as we work through phase one and phase two. I know, I've heard from other teachers and, and a couple of other school divisions. I haven't heard anything from any of our teachers here. But one of the concerns that they have raised is parents are also watching virtual instruction arena and are critiquing teachers. And generally, the comments they make pretty much show that they're really not aware- Generally, the comments they make pretty much show that they're really not aware of what the teacher's really trying to do, but I'm just wondering, I haven't had that, but you know, it's funny, I never really thought about that, is that when you're doing virtual instruction, the kids are at home, parents are at home, parents obviously are sitting with their kids, and some of them have a need to critique.
Haven't had any specific feedback exactly on that, but I have had some positive feedback from parents regarding instruction. I had a really nice personal note from a parent today complimenting a teacher for reaching out to a student after the class and going the extra mile to really make sure the student understood what was happening. So, most of what I've heard has been incredibly complimentary of the way our teachers are reaching out and the wonderful job that they're doing.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Dowell?
My only question at this point was regarding how we bus students, and clearly, there's going to be no convenient way to bus students in PATH2. I was really more interested to know if some of our bus aides will be returning, those that went and took on other duties, will they be returning to that?
We're actually starting to reverse all of those roles, and everyone's been put in place into their regular role as we move into PATH2, because we can use every instructional aide in K through 3 and well, pre-K as well. So, a lot of the positions that we put in other places, a significant number have been pushed back already, and we're actually hiring additional aides as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
I'm going to try to organize my questions so that staff, a lot of staff kind of playing musical chairs. So, these are two questions that I am curious about generally, but understand not looking for an answer tonight. But both are kind of how we're doing. So, the first how we're doing is, as you're bringing students back for assessments, I'd like to know what kind of slippage you're seeing. You know, so at some point, I'd like some information on sort of student achievement or student outcomes in terms of the results of these assessments that you've been bringing kids back to do, and just what your assessment is of how, you know, how our kids are doing after they shut down in March. So, you know, sometime in a couple of months would be really great to know what you're seeing and what your assessment is and what you plan to do in response to what you're seeing. And then also around school meals, just child nutrition services, and Mr. Snipes and his team are doing an amazing job with Grab &amp; Go, and now they're going to start feeding kids in school and giving them food to take home, and plus the delivery, so it's just incredible work. But I'd like to know if there's a big gap between the number of meals we used to, that we were giving out in March and that we're providing now, because, you know, not only, you know, am I worried about volume, but also nutritional quality, right? The food that comes from our schools is excellent nutritionally, and so I'd like to know that. The learning centers, I think that's wonderful that you're providing that to people so that they can bring their kids. I think that's fabulous, but I'm curious if you think that's going to have an impact on the need of the request that we just made for year-end spending on a stipend? Do you think that's going to have an impact on that? Could you speak to that?
I don't believe so, because the learning centers have been set up specifically to get us on the PATH2, and it's probably not sustainable moving forward, because we're actually creating them for a very small number of students in each school, and it involves a small number of staff to supervise them. Even when we go to grades four and five, there's probably too many students for us to supervise within the school building. So, it's a stopgap measure to support teachers so that we're not making it difficult for K-3 teachers to come back right now, because every other teacher still has a waiver to bring their own students to school. But as we move through the paths, we won't have those options, and therefore, what the board has requested in terms of funding to help families from the Board of Supervisors will be incredibly important as we start to move into PATH3 and 4.
And then I was curious about a comment I think you made, Mr. Walker, about centers not being asynchronous, they're being asynchronous. So, is there any center instruction that's happening synchronously?
No, not at this time.
Not at this time?
No.
Thank you. Yeah, that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you very much for everything.
Mr. Kelly?
Couple of comments and a couple of questions. I can assure you, you do not have many, there are not many teachers that are working five days a week.
That's true.
So, just, most of them are working eight. It's incredible out there. And as far as Dr. Beers' comment about teachers being critiqued, I've heard stories of teachers that are getting input from parents about the production of their videos and lighting and all that other stuff. It's just ridiculous, but, and that's, you know, all it takes is one of those to wear on a teacher incredibly. We talked about winter conditioning and the start of winter athletics. Do we know when, has VHL talked about fall and spring? I want to think, was it fall like February 12th or something?
So, we have a schedule for conditioning for all seasons, and we are starting off with October 26th for winter sports. We're bringing back fall sports to conditioning on November 9th, and January 15th for spring sports. And at this point, the VHSL has voted on their seasons, and I don't have the date off the top of my head, but winter sports does start at mid-December, and then I think they're going to meet one more time to talk about each sport for playing, but right now, they're scheduled to roll with the winter season, followed by the fall season in between winter and spring, so some of the seasons are going to overlap just a bit.
Right, right. I think it was on the Jamestown Athletic Newsletter that I saw that date for that.
Along that line, could you just refresh our memories on what are the winter sports versus the fall?
Testing me, but I'm going to try real hard. So, winter is basketball, they have the winter track, we have, somebody help me.
Mr. Keever?
Swimming, swimming, we don't have gymnastics, swimming and wrestling, yes.
Okay.
Is volleyball winter sport?
Volleyball's fall. The fall is usually football for us, volleyball, field hockey, soccer's in the spring, cross country.
Baseball?
I can email this to everybody tomorrow morning.
I'm sorry.
So, you will have a list.
No, that's all right. I just was mainly also thinking along those lines of the conditioning.
Yes.
And with VHSL and with the individual schools' openings, that are we tying the conditioning dates to a VHSL conditioning date so that our athletes are starting to be conditioned so that they can compete adequately with their neighbors regardless of what path we're on?
So, we're following guidance and direction from the VHSL, but we're also following what we have outlined in our past first, and the reason we're starting with winter conditioning just as a two-week jumpstart is to allow all of our coaches to implement the proper procedures and to, you know, have the training for our athletes and parents and everybody so that we can get things in place, plan a schedule, and then gradually add more students from that point on with best practice in place. And so, yes, we're following the order of the VHSL, which they have dictated that our fall season, which usually happens first, is going to be kind of put in between the winter and the spring. So, we wanted to allow conditioning to start a couple of weeks early for the teams that were going to begin practicing first, and then we're going to bring them all back as soon as possible.
So, are fall sports like football, for example? They are going, they're not going to be conditioned after other teams are conditioning across the state?
Well, different school divisions are doing different things, so I couldn't speak to all of them. Some school divisions have been conditioning, some have not at all, so that's very different across the state.
It is to me, just having a son that played football.
Yes.
The conditioning is so important.
It absolutely is.
For their safety, that to put our kids at a disadvantage, not being able to do that conditioning when another school that they're going to be competing with has been doing it for three or four weeks, it's a safety concern.
Yeah, along those lines, though, that's formal conditioning with coaches. I mean, they can be conditioning now as, you know, running and doing all those things, and they're still going to have several months before they go into season, because I think it's like February something is when fall sports are going to be.
Making sure they have the strength.
Right, right. So, while the two of you are there, so we have classroom teachers are going to be in the classroom Monday through Thursday, teaching A through Z. So, who is providing the curriculum for the remote days?
That's all part of the digital curriculum that's been written over the summer with that large, large group of teachers and our curriculum content coordinators, technology integration coaches. It's all there for them to access. We're striving to make certain that the power is in the in-person instruction and that what students are working on would be a natural extension of what happened in class, as well as some of those pieces that would be asynchronous, such as those centers' teachers, recognizing the balance that needs to happen for teachers with planning for in-person versus being able to also continue maintaining and managing that electronic LMS page where students can access materials, and we recognize that that's a very fine balance, and we want to be very cognizant of that.
Yes, we very much have to balance what our teachers are doing, because granted, the classroom teacher is teaching the same thing Monday and Tuesday that they're teaching Wednesday and Thursday.
To a degree.
To a degree, because it's A through L and then it's M through Z.
Right.
But just don't want to make sure, I'd like to make sure we're not beholden them to also provide the remote learning for M through Z on Monday and Tuesday and...
Absolutely not. The schedule, we are not doing that.
Yeah, we've actually changed the whole schedule from the normal schedule where they usually have a centers' class every day, and all of those types of classes are happening when the students are on the remote days that the regular teacher isn't responsible for. So, we've tried to take as much off those remote days as is possible in the schedule.
Yeah, and I do appreciate the reduction of this by an hour. I mean, I think it's, it only seems like an hour, but I think it's a big help and appreciate that. It certainly, it's something for sure. So, there are, we're going to go to PATH2 on the 26th of October. There are school systems that are ahead of us, and there are school systems that are behind us, so, you know, we're not the last people here to go into school.
Right.
Right? And we haven't heard about how those schools who are in, particularly in our area, how they're doing as far as, I mean, it's still a little bit early, yes, since mostly about four days into it. It's going to take us a couple of weeks before we actually get good data from what they're doing, right?
I think the initial reports are good, but there's no actual data available, as you've referenced.
So, then, my last question's for Mr. Landers, so I can, we're doing, we did the MiFi checkout, so we've got 98 students that we've got doing MiFi's. Is that what I understand?
Yes, sir.
And then we have 72 students that we haven't heard from, so that number could go up to 170, I guess, if the problem is connectivity, right?
Potentially, yes. The principals, building staff are actively reaching out to those students, and there was a corresponding drop in the number that had not logged in as our MiFi checkout increased. It does seem there is a relation there.
Okay, great. The wireless on wheels, do we know how much utilization we're getting from that?
I'm looking to get a report on that soon. However, I do have a couple of indications that at least two of our units have exceeded their bandwidth for the day, so that does tell me that they are being used.
Is there any reason we can't keep them parked in neighborhoods seven days a week? We only have to do it five days a week?
Just, as far as I know, a staffing issue.
It could be battery as well, I presume.
Staffing, battery, that's true.
So, I'm sure we could make that happen, and that would be of a great advantage to students as well.
So, when somebody parks the MiFi in a neighborhood, do they stay with it?
Currently, yes, sir.
Is that necessary? I don't know. Just something to look at, because I mean, I think that's a critical thing to have in particular neighborhoods and areas, and then if we can open that bandwidth, if we can open that aperture a little bit so we can get them increased connectivity and usage of that, I think that would be something we should definitely look at.
I'll definitely speak with Mr. Snipes about that.
I'd be curious as to what the challenges are there and if there's any way that we can overcome them. I think that brings me to the end of my list.
Thanks, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Young?
Yes, I was just to piggyback on to what Mr. Kelly said. I spoke with a teacher yesterday that works at our division, and she talked, she said that she's working, hasn't worked this hard since the first five years that she taught school. I can only imagine how difficult this is, and then I am very, very concerned when we go into PATH2 that we're not actually increasing that workload with, and I do understand that some of that time on the days that students aren't with the teacher will be involved with centers, but I don't know, I guess I would really like, and I don't know how you would do that, but I'd really like a survey of, after a week or so after we go back to find out how teachers are feeling, because I think our teachers are pretty stressed at this point. And having been a teacher myself, and I know how, our teachers work hard when school is in session normally, and so we've actually, probably for many of our teachers, we've actually, I won't say double their workload, but maybe double is the right word. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I would have to say I agree. I've talked to some teachers who have echoed those concerns, and to Dr. Beers' point, some teachers have shared with me that they've received feedback that maybe wasn't so kind, and so I think it's clear from this presentation tonight how our staff are working very hard and have been for many, many months. And I mentioned this back in March, patience and civility are something that the community needs to continue to give to our teachers, because they do work really, really hard. Additional comments, questions for staff?
This is just kind of a general, so we're being very, very deliberate in bringing the students back on to PATH2. Do you think that as conditions are changing that we will end up being a little agile, I guess, in going back and forth between paths as they happen or as they may happen? Or is it something that we should expect that it is a long process to figure out how to safely get to the next path? I think I was envisioning at the very beginning, it would be, oh, we go from two to three, it's a couple, you know, maybe a one-week thing, and now when we see the level of complexity, is this something that we just need to prepare our parents and our families for, that it's that with every move, it isn't going to be an instantaneous?
That's correct. We're trying to give families three weeks' notice before we push to another level for any particular grade level, and yes, it's very complex operationally to make it happen, especially when it comes to childcare and that particular piece. I mean, the goal is to move forward as the data allows, but you're absolutely right. If we were to have a total breakout within our region of COVID-19, it could throw us all back into total remote learning again. And we've said all along, we'll follow the data, and we've built a structure that's following the CDC and VDH guidelines that's very exact that we're going to follow closely and monitor data literally daily. But we are very hopeful. The data is holding steady. We are moving forward, and we're excited to get students back into school very safely.
Ms. Cook?
I have any idea as long as, so you're saying three weeks? Have any idea as long as if it, so you're saying three weeks. So let's say, things are looking great a month after we're on path two. Then once you make that decision, it's going to be in an announcement that will give people three weeks notice? Is that?
Yes. I mean, the original announcement was that everybody would be in virtual learning or remote learning for nine weeks. So we want to get path two started, keep watching the data and then come behind probably with fourth and fifth grade and then go from there. So we're being very gradual. I don't think it's going to be three weeks or a month between each path. If the data is telling us to move forward, we certainly will. But we're watching all of the pieces and trying to bring grade levels in gradually.
And, and you also want to think it through. So, I mean, each, each, each path or half a step on of a path brings its own complexities and challenges and, and new things that, you know, that we, we didn't necessarily think of in July when we came up with path one, two, three, and four. And so how these pieces actually fall together may also dictate how we do as far as staying in each path and that you may find it might be easier for us to start along versus...
We're, we're looking at all options, Mr. Kelly. If the, if the data shows us to move forward and move, jump path three and go to path four at some point, that is, every option is on the table. Because the paths and a hybrid learning model is incredibly complex to, to make happen as we found out on path two. And we think we can take it certainly through elementary, but it becomes even more complex later on because of childcare especially. So if the data proves good and if other systems have brought everybody in successfully with no outbreaks, I believe we have the mitigation strategies in place. They'll be tried and tested by then to move forward. But again, it's every, every day where we want to see how we do in this piece and see how, how well we do, and then we'll go from there.
And, you know, that's, it's incumbent upon the community to do the right things, but it's also our definition of an outbreak too. I mean, we're going to have cases of COVID going forward throughout this society for a long time to come. And we're just going to have to, we have to figure out how we're going to deal with it and when we have to react to it.
I mean, you're right, Mr. Kelly, excuse me, Madam Chair, just people are going to have to follow that checklist every day and, and be really committed to that. And it's going to be hard, but everyone's going to have to put the oar in the water and pull hard to make sure that we all head in the same direction, everybody.
Additional comments? Thank you, everyone. Presentation, a lot of information. Okay, moving on to policies. Eight point one, review policy E, B, C, D, school closings. I'm going to toss it to Dr. Beers and Ms. Hummel.
Could you start this?
I'll start this one. We wanted to first of all, thank Mr. Dowell for bringing a recommendation to review this policy because it's, we are in very bizarre times now and we had no expectation that we would be dealing with a pandemic with this policy. So we, it was timely for us to take a look at it again. What we felt was really important is that we got kind of a legal view about our current policy. So we reached out to our lawyers and we said, is the policy that we currently have legally sound even in a pandemic situation? Is it, is it following the intent of our, our board members? And he came back with, with his recommendation that yes, it's legally sound. There's, there's no reason legally why our current policy can't stand on its own. He also said that some of your revisions are legally sound too. So there's, it, it's really just more of a matter of what this, the majority of this board feels is a representation of what their intent is. So, did you want to add anything to that?
We came to the conclusion that we didn't see any reason at this time to make any changes and...
So the policy committee's recommendation is just to keep the policy as it is. So that's, that's our recommendation.
Comments, questions? Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the policy committee, I, I want to say thank you for taking it up and for going, and going the next step and getting the attorneys involved and getting those, those recommendations direct from our attorneys. I definitely don't want us to, as a, as a body, as a board, as a division, to be outside of the scope of the law. And so thank you for doing that. I sit here, I stand here ready to support the policy committee's recommendation, which is to leave as is. And I appreciate, appreciate Dr. Beers, you mentioning at this time. It really, and to go back to when I brought this up several months back, my intention was to never circumvent what Dr. Heron had put in place. It was to really highlight a, a different responsibility of the board. But the train was moving. And if you recall at that time, I did mention in a later year. And so I appreciate you, Dr. Beers, saying not at this time because I don't, and I wouldn't want to see, you know, all the great efforts that Dr. Heron has put forward in the staff to be circumvented by a policy change of this magnitude at this time. The, the train's on the tracks. We need to keep it moving. So I, I sit here ready to support the recommendation of the policy committee as it is. I don't see it being a, a, in a pandemic, this being a, something tantamount to a other related closure, which that policy I think more or less speaks to. But that's my interpretation. But aside from that, still ready to support. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Additional comments? Mr. Kelly?
I, I appreciate everybody's comments on this policy. Some of the, some of the people, members of the public who I've talked to, I think they, they, they kind of confuse the relationship between the superintendent and the school board and that that is not an executive and a legislative. It's an employee employer. And so if, if the employee's doing something we don't like, we can take action on that. And, but what I don't want to do is, is have the school board say, okay, we're going to school October 26th, and then October 22nd, we have a problem. And then is the superintendent bound by the school board's decision to put him in school? Or do we have to all gather again on the 24th and say, yeah, we were, we need to, so that, so I just don't want to restrict the latitude of the superintendent to make those decisions that are, that affect the safety of our staff and our students. And so, and so I, I think the policy is, gets us there as it's written. But I just, you know, the, it's, it's a, it's a board of directors, CEO thing. And so if we have a problem where we think that this, that school's being closed for way too long and then we can, we can go in there and take action on that. So it's, it's not, I know some of the people I've talked to, I think they feel like, oh, we can't do anything to override the superintendent's decision. But, I mean, it's an employee at the, at the end of the day. And so we can always take those kinds of actions. So. But I appreciate the efforts of the policy committee and Mr. Dowell on that, on making us all think about that policy. I think that's really good.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
I, I agree with Mr. Kelly's comments and I, and the appreciation of Mr. Dowell and that policy committee. For me, I think what's key is the at this time piece as well. Dr. Beers, and for me, I'm always cautious about changing policy in response to a single event. Like, I always think that that's something that you should be cautious about. So God forbid, we have another situation where there's a long closure that, you know, maybe it's time for us to take another look at the, at the policy. But at the end of the day, this is a single event. And so I'm just not ready to change the policy. And it's always good to look at this stuff. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
I mean, I, I understand why the policy hasn't been changed, but I was just rereading what Mr. Dowell had written. And basically, that's what is happening. And the superintendent is looking at the data and moving forward. So, I mean, I think as long as we have our current superintendent, I'm not worried. I mean, if that makes sense, because I totally support her. And I think what we're seeing from tonight, that, that things were very well thought out. And so maybe in the future, that might be something. But currently I will, I, I support the policy as is.
Thank you. So it sounds like we have consensus. And so the, the normal next step would be that this would go onto the consent agenda at the next meeting?
Well, this is a, a question. If we're not changing...
We did review it.
We reviewed it.
Yeah, we reviewed.
Reviewed it. So we would just vote on...
Let's take credit for reviewing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted a point of like what was appropriate. Okay.
We'll have a date that we reviewed it and then it will go on, on the consent agenda if, if everyone is, that's the typical process.
We don't have to vote on it because we're not changing it. So nothing to, nothing to vote on, but take credit for it.
Take credit for it.
Credit for the fact it was reviewed.
They worked. Take credit for everyone's work.
The next board isn't saying this hasn't been reviewed in 14 years.
Cause we got nothing else to do, so we might as well.
Exactly. So it'll have a new review date on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, so it will move forward on to the next consent agenda. Okay. All right. Moving on to item eight point two, revised policy JL student fundraising activities. Dr. Heron, is that Ms. Ewing?
Yes, that's me. Thank you, Madam Chair. This agenda item is to revise policy JL student fundraising activities, which was last revised in 2015. Proposed revisions are to align with our current practices and procedures and update some of the verbiage within the policy. There's also a regulation for this policy that has been revised and is provided for your information. Our attorney has reviewed as well as the policy committee and recommend approval of the policy as presented. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Ms. Cook?
So, I know, so just so I understand, this policy applies to school activities funds, but also conveys to like boosters and PTAs, correct? Even though? Correct. Okay. Just, I, you know, hear this from me all the time, but even though, I mean, we do have jurisdiction over the activity funds, we don't have jurisdiction over the PTAs and boosters. But in all cases, I, I remain concerned about equity in the schools and the difference in the amount of funds that goes through the schools on a, on a per capita basis, based on generally speaking, the, the demographic of the population in the schools and its impact on the, on the potential experience those kids have because of, the students have because of the amount of funds going through those accounts. So say that every, every year. Why isn't it me every year?
You can't tell, just a smile on your...
Dr. Beers?
Yeah. I understand what you're saying. And I understand that these activities are generally developed by parents or, or, you know, outside interest. I'm not sure. I'm, I'm trying to understand what, what you think this, these, this school was able to raise X number of dollars with this school class? And then are we supposed to make up the difference? What are you talking about?
I, I think that's an excellent question, Dr. Beers. And I'm, I'm not sure that I have an answer to it. But I do think that sometimes when you discuss it and analyze it and bring it to people's attention, just shining the light on it sometimes makes a difference. So really, that's why I talk about it. You know, should we subsidize other schools or penalize schools who do more? No, I don't think either of those is, are appropriate solutions and certainly not even an option when it comes to PTAs and boosters. But it's just something that if we talk about, maybe people will pay attention to and, and consider and come up with something creative and proactive that, that, you know, doesn't even have to emanate from us, if you will. Does that make sense?
Didn't I see on here GoFundMe?
So, so Mrs. Cook's point, you know, the student fundraising activities, and I don't know if I want to talk about it in JL or JLR, which one, but they seem to be coordinated a lot at the school level. And I don't know if there should be some school system throttling of that so that one school doesn't have five times the amount that another school has? That, okay, that's enough fundraising folks where I think we're there. I just, because, because when we get those reports at the end, the end of the year, it is a little distasteful sometimes on, on where, where one school is versus another. And it just seems that there needs to be somebody overarching that says, you know, I think he raised enough money now. So I just, because it does get a little bit distasteful is the word.
Exactly.
Actually, Julie, we talked about that in the sense that we were, we were a little concerned that you wouldn't find out about this until... You know, as you said, these are school-based and if you, really is the principal that makes the decision.
Right, and, and...
Any, is somebody farther up that is taking a look at that?
And, and the distastefulness for me isn't necessarily so much at high school and middle school, but at elementary? And that there's some, there's, there's a lot of delta there. I'm not saying that we should tax one school and send it to another school or do any of that. But at some point, we just got to say, I think we've done enough. So I don't know. That's just my thoughts. I don't really have any, any policy or actions. It's just...
Yeah, the issue of oversight.
Yeah.
Talked about. And I guess the other thing was, I was a little, we were, I was a little concerned that this went forward. But then I was also reminded that information about budgets and goes to our, our finance office. And, and so there's, you know, a little bit different kind of check, but looking for that and overly concerned.
Maybe some guidance of the, guidance of some of the principals about, you know, how much, how much resources do you need?
What I don't have, what I don't have is, you know, what's that look like as school steadily operates when state had or...
I can give you audit reports for years going back.
Right, exactly. The trend is important. Yeah.
I think that would be useful.
Comments? Ms. Young? Okay. Moving on to action items. Item nine point one, personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve item nine point one?
Did we do JLR yet?
We just did that.
We don't do JLR.
Thought we did JL.
Don't do ours. Ours is a reg, that's just a courtesy.
That's just for our information.
There's just two policies.
What's that?
Policies on the agenda tonight.
Ours are just provided as a courtesy. Regulations are not our jurisdiction.
Remember, problem with the Rs undo with the JL. But we're good. Moving on.
Ms. Young?
Oh, you want me to do the motion?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve personnel actions as presented.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion? Or none? Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item nine point two, release from compulsory attendance cases, number R 21 dash O2, number R 21 dash O3, and number R 21 dash O4. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of release from compulsory attendance cases R 21 dash O2, R 21 O3, and R 21 O4.
Okay.
Okay.
Any discussion? Or none? Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Moving on to item nine point three, amend school year calendar, school year 2021 calendar. Is there a motion to approve that?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the proposed first semester revisions to the school year 2021 calendar.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Point of clarification? So the things that were presented to us for the second semester that are still in, not, this could come back to us again, is my question?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, these are just the, the first semester changes on the January 26, '07 exams.
Thank you. I thought, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, did he hear a second? Is that correct?
Didn't.
Any additional discussion or questions? Are we none? Ms. Sarza?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Aye. Item 10.1, board matters. Mr. Dowell?
Yeah, I'd like to just be a cheerleader for a little bit, and just really thank all of our teachers and staff, Dr. Heron, Mr. Keever, for all of your, and I don't say this flippantly, tireless, tireless efforts. I've seen it in my own home with three children, and I also want to applaud the efforts, put it that way, the efforts of all of our parents that are sitting right beside their students, trying to help them learn asynchronous, synchronously, synchron, asynchronous, asynchronously. It is. Thank you, thank you. Together, or not together, in fact, not together. It's, I was remarking with my wife yesterday, watching her, and then watching her with our kids, and Joshua, my youngest, asking me a math question, a fifth grade math question, which is sixth grade work, and just saying, didn't you learn this? You should know this. I kind of put it back on him, but I, it just...
Smooth.
You know, I just, I feel for all the parents that are having to do this at home, you know, and we have come to rely on teachers in an extraordinary way to teach and then reteach, and kind of reshape how learning is done, and now we're doing it remotely. And so my heart does go out to all these families that, well, there's so many that, you know, they don't have a parent at home right there with their student, and how are those students learning and getting nurtured in their education, and to hear that we've got 72 that are presumably unaccounted for yet, and so we need to continue looking for those students, finding them, figure out why they're not checking in, and what we can do to support them, support their parents, their families. But thank you for all of your, your tireless, tireless work. My wife being a elementary educator, and, and I was very young seeing her put together lesson plans and prepare for, for her classroom on Saturdays and Sundays, and wondering why she's still working. So, as Mr. Kelly alluded to, the work's being done eight days a week, and it's clear in a COVID environment. I want to say congratulations to Ms. Alicia Smith, our Jamestown Teacher of the Year, and Region Two Teacher of the Year, and soon to be our Virginia Teacher of the Year. That's going to be very exciting, given into being right now. And I look forward to congratulating her in person, if we ever get that opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for, for being a role model, of course, but also being, since a person of, that we can take pride in and, you know, honor locally, as there's a whole lot of work going on in our, right, directly in our faces and behind, behind the scenes, but to be able to show off an individual here and then show up, show her off to the state is a breath of fresh air, and I think a shot in the arm for our division. That's about it for me cheerleading, but I do sincerely mean these things. I'm just very proud of our teachers and our staff and our families that are buckling down and doing the work and, and not giving in, not giving up, and starting to see a little bit of light towards that tunnel where we're seeing this return to in-person class, and I know our teachers want to see that, too. So, thank you.
Mr. Dowell, Ms. Cook?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to agree with everything that Mr. Dowell said, and, you know, thank staff, you know, for their work, really, since March, but particularly for the presentations given here tonight. Thank you. I know a lot of work goes into, you know, preparing this information for the public and for the school board, and it is, you know, deeply appreciated, and I just want to, you know, echo what Mr. Kelly has said for many weeks now, which is just to ask people for their grace and understanding throughout this whole process. You know, Dr. Heron and her team have worked tirelessly to make the decisions that they've made with the interests of students always first, and recognizing that there's no substitute for in-person learning, and, you know, we have heard from people who are upset that we're going back on the 26th. We've heard some people upset, from people who are, that are upset we're not back already, and so, anyway, there's just no shortage of opinions out there, and we're really glad that people feel comfortable sharing those opinions politely and kindly, and with respect to, for the work that has gone into making these decisions. And so we'll continue to soldier on as a community and work together synchronously and asynchronously to, you know, to make sure that we put our kids first. So I just, you know, thank you, Dr. Heron, thank you to your team, and we know that you're, that kids are always first and foremost in, in your decision-making, and that is why you're just such an amazing educational leader, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, I mean, tonight, we talked about what was going to happen in our buildings as we prepared to return back to Phase Two, but, but one of the things, as a school board member, and having visited all of our buildings, I'm always amazed at how incredibly clean and well-maintained our buildings are, and so I want to kind of give a shout out tonight for, to our operations people and our onsite personnel, they, they work diligently. I mean, I, I'm often, having been in elementary schools and knowing what they can be, and knowing what they should be, where past should be, our schools are beautiful. And tonight, in the personnel actions, we have a carpenter who's retiring, but I don't know if the community knows that on staff, and I, and Dr. Heron could certainly correct me, but on staff at operations, we have electricians, carpenters, plumbers, HVAC personnel, in addition to our mechanics who work in the garage, and, and all of the other people, the bus assistants and everything that keep our, our schools running. We think of schools in terms of teachers and students, but there's a whole outline structure out there that supports that, and I just want to give them a shout out. I really think we should get some of those signs that say, "Heroes work here," and put them in our schools, because our teachers are working overtime. The teacher that I talked to yesterday, not only, she, she was not complaining, I don't want to say that, but she did recognize the increased workload. And the other part, which I didn't mention, was her concern for the students who, as she's looking at, wanting to reach out to them and, and help them. You can't do that online. You can give them additional support, add, call them later, but it's not the same as being there and kneeling down next to a kid and saying, "This is, let me help you," or asking another kid to help, because sometimes kids explain it in kids' terms better than the teacher can. So, anyway, that you have my vote, you're my heroes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I echo everything that everybody has said up to, already, and I would like to remind parents, recognize how devoted, how determined, and incredibly hardworking our teachers are under extraordinarily difficult circumstances. I've spoken to a number of teachers over the last few weeks, not just in this school district, but others as well, and to a person, they have never worked as hard as they have worked, trying to put as much as they can into their online instruction. It's, it's exhausting, I know, and I can't help but worry about those, especially the young teachers, but it's not so young teachers. We're doing that during the day, and then doing a part-time job afterward to help make ends meet. That's, that's above and beyond the call, but, you know, God bless them, and we're just lucky to have them. And again, I would, I'd, I'd leave with these three words: be patient, be responsible.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Kind of feel like Julie now, where everybody's taking my material, you know? It's just, and, and, Dr. Beers, you're going to have to explain those three words to me, because it seems like you use more than three words, but that's just... Because I, and I just want to echo everybody else, with the teachers and the staff who have worked so hard and continue to work so hard to provide education for our students, the students themselves who are working incredibly hard, this is not easy for them either, you know, the, the virtual learning and the, and the struggle to come through that, the parents there who, who are, you know, trying to help their students and, and, and guide them and to, and I think hopefully earning a lot of respect for what the teachers are doing in their classroom every day, and our community, you know, overwhelmingly, the understanding and kindness and the grace that we do get from our community, there are some outliers that are out there, too, but, I mean, overwhelmingly, the community has been very supportive. And, and, you know, I also don't think we, I think we can, can overlook the fact that all this is happening with another layer of chaos above us. Let everybody else define what that is, but there's, you know, besides the virus, there's just, there's just chaos everywhere, and so I just, I just think that, I guess my, my, my advice or recommendation, or whatever you want to call it, is that people just stop and do something for themselves every once in a while, and just disconnect and, you know, go for a walk, go for a ride, go for a run, just, you know, because there's an awful lot going on. So I just, I thank everybody in the community, I thank everybody associated with our school system, the incredible work that's going on, it's, it's a great community to be a part of. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
There's absolutely nothing left for me to say. Except a little shout out for the COVID dashboard, just in addition to all of this, because I like the transparency, I like the fact that we've got that dashboard out there. I think Mr. Kelly's recommendation of adding that extra nuance of, of the cases and then recovered, you know, active case, it would just be extra, but I think that's a, it's a nice thing for parents and teachers and everything else to just kind of look at, to know, oh, we're, we're doing great, we're doing great, we're still doing great, and just keep up the good work, everyone, but, yeah. Everybody else said really wonderful things, so I will pass it to you.
And there's zero left for me, but, but I think that goes to show that not only are our staff phenomenal and, and our students, but our, our, our school board. And so I think it's very clear that each and every one of the members of this board are committed to education, they're committed to this division, and they're committed to supporting our administrators and helping them make the right decisions, and, and none of us have slept well, probably since March, and so a lot of us carry the stress and the burden of, you know, supporting staff and helping them make the right decisions. So, ditto to what everyone said, so, but I can share a couple little updates. So, Dr. Heron and I were able to present via Zoom to the Williamsburg Rotary, which was really fun, and so that was a great way to continue to stay engaged with people who have lots of questions, want to understand what the school board is doing, and the challenges that we're facing, and had an opportunity to remind them that we, we still want volunteers, so if at some point things change and we can get volunteers back in our buildings, we still want folks to support us and work with our students. I attended the NAACP virtual celebration over the weekend, and that was just another really great event that showcased phenomenal talent from students and adults, singers in groups, and it was just really inspirational and left people with a charge to action. And then, since we are living in a virtual world, just wanted to let people who have seniors know that there is, we are continuing to have our virtual college fair, so there's information on your high school website and on the division website, but colleges are continuing to come and share information with students. So, thank you, everyone. Thank you, my colleagues, as well as staff, for all that you do. So moving on to our upcoming events, the Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting again via Zoom on October 8 at 6:30. We're going to have a Virginia School Board Association budget training for school board members that will take place here, but also with a virtual speaker. Policy Committee will meet on October 29 at 8:00 a.m. via Zoom. Then upcoming meetings, we have closed session on October 20 at 6:00 p.m., followed by public comment, where typically the community would come and have an opportunity to speak to CIP. We still want the community to share their thoughts about CIP. That'll just be done via telephone, as all other comments have been done, so just remind the public to, to phone in. That'll be followed by a regular meeting, and then we'll have a special joint meeting that Ms. Cook talked about earlier with our funding partners and our legislators on October 26 at 8:00 a.m. via Zoom, and then we will have closed session on October 10 at 6:00 p.m., followed by a work session at 6:30. Additional comments? Questions? With that, this meeting is adjourned.
We got one other comment.